Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Standing Committees Meeting for Wednesday, June 19, 2019. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I'm your Deputy City Clerk. With us today, we have our Sign Language Interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation up for preliminary approval by Pittsburgh City Council. Our pre-agenda, which consists of appointments and/or reappointments. Bill Number 1645. Resolution Appointing Erica Ninos as a Commissioner of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission of the City of Pittsburgh, with the term to expire April 30, 2023. Bill Number 1717. Resolution Appointing Jenna Kramer as a member of the Pittsburgh Equal Opportunity Review Commission, with the term to expire April 30, 2022. Finance and Law Committee, Reverend Burgess is the Chair. We have a new paper and it's Bill Number 1766. Resolution authorizing the City of Pittsburgh Ethics Hearing Board to enter into a professional services agreement with DeForest, Kostelnik, Eukitis, and Burrare Donelli in the Copper's Building for professional legal services regarding ethics matter in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Bill Number 1767. Resolution authorizing the City of Pittsburgh Ethics Hearing Board to enter into a professional services agreement with Rothman Gordon PC for professional legal services regarding ethics matters cost not to exceed $15,000. Bill Number 1768. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh or hereby authorized to enter into an amendment or amendments to extend the existing intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and the County of Allegheny for the Enterprise Resource Planning by increasing the total amount by $600,030 for continuing support of the JDE ERP system. Bill Number 1769. Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210 acceptance of gifts to the City of the City Code, the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from the Pirates Charities in the amount of $11,000 to be deposited in the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Bill Number 1770. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections Alternative Fuels Incentive Grant Program by adding eight dual-hosed electric vehicle charging stations to the Second Avenue Fleet. Cost not to exceed $135,160 for this stated purpose. Bill Number 1771. Resolution authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections Alternative Fuels Incentive Grant Program to purchase nine electric vehicles to be added to the City's fleet. Cost not to exceed $67,500. Public Works Committee, Mrs. Cal Smith is the Chair. We have a new paper, Bill Number 1778. Resolution granting unto saddle properties, 6101 Penn Avenue. Their successors assigns the privilege license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp with helm handrail at 1016 Fifth Avenue in the First Ward Sixth Council District. Land Use and Economic Development Committee, Ms. Gross is the Chair. We have new papers, Bill Number 1772. Resolution amending Resolution 98 of 2017 of the Residential Parking Permit Program Area KK in the South Side Flats Community Council District Number 3. Bill Number 1773. Resolution amending Resolution Number 363 of 2018 for the Residential Parking Permit Program Area X in the Shady Side Community Council District 8. Bill Number 1774. Resolution amending Resolution Number 13 of 2019, effective January 7, 2019, entitled "Resolution Providing for an Agreement and/or Contract with Consultants and Vendors to Assist the City in Developing Plans and Studies to Support the Development of an Oakland Neighborhood Plan and Provide for the Payment at a Cost Not to Exceed $250,000." Inter-Governmental Affairs Committee, Mr. O'Connor is the Chair. We have new papers, Bill Number 1775. Resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement between the City of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Water and Sewer Authority to provide for the rights and obligations of each party with respect to the other and for payments and capital cooperation between the parties. Bill Number 1776. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for 43rd Street Town Home at 172 43rd Street at the recently subdivided parcel. Bill Number 1777. Resolution adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewage Facilities Plan for the Elmhurst Group, 1 Bigelow Square, Suite 630. And the Hearings Committee, Mr. Kraus is the Chair. We have a new paper, Bill Number 1779. Petition from the Residents of the City of Pittsburgh requesting a public hearing before City Council relative to random and excessive bus route and stop changes by the Port Authority of Allegheny County without notice to the residents in the Morningside Neighborhood. This petition is valid in accordance with the Home Rule Charter. That concludes the reading of legislation up for preliminary approval. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Welcome to the pre-agenda for Wednesday, June 19, 2019. And we have two appointments today for consideration. Erica Ninos to the Clean Pittsburgh Commission and Jenna Kramer to the Equal Opportunity Review Commission. I believe we will be joined by council members shortly. So until then, we'll get started and I'll ask the Clerk to please read the title of the bills.
Bill 1645. Resolution Appointing Erica Ninos as a Commissioner of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission of the City of Pittsburgh, for a term to expire April 30, 2023. Bill Number 1717. Resolution Appointing Jenna Kramer as a member of the Pittsburgh Equal Opportunity Review Commission, with a term to expire April 30, 2022.
Excellent, thank you. So I would like to just offer you both opportunity to introduce yourselves to the public, to council members, and a little bit why you're interested in serving on the respective commissions that you've been asked to serve on. Either one of you can start.
Sure. My name is Erica Ninos. I serve as the Sustainability Coordinator for the University of Pittsburgh. I am serving in the Division of Student Affairs at the University of Pittsburgh. So I work on student-facing sustainability initiatives campus-wide. So what that means is we focus a lot on diversion efforts, zero-waste efforts campus-wide. We plan a lot of the community cleanups. So when I was approached by Myrna Newman, who is the co-chair of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission about serving on the commission, this was really exciting to me. It dovetails really nicely with a lot of the work that I do on campus and then in the communities that the university touches on a regular basis. So communities such as Oakland, Homewood, Hazelwood, South Side. So it's a pretty exciting thing to be a part of, particularly the education efforts and the very proactive efforts the Clean Pittsburgh Commission is engaged in, in educating the city residents and in working with community members.
And we are joined now by Councilwoman Harris. Thank you for joining us. Jenna, would you like to introduce yourself as well?
Sure. Yes. My name is Jenna Kramer. I am the Executive Director at Green Building Alliance. GBA has been around for 26 years, working to advance the idea of healthy and high-performing places for everyone. And we, I've been there for 11 years and in my time there have really embodied and advanced the idea and the value of sustainability in all of our buildings and communities so that all people can thrive. And, you know, we see that in the opportunity with construction and development as a way to continue to promote human health for all people in the region, economic opportunity, social equity, and also an environmentally healthy place to live.
Councilwoman, would you like to ask any questions of our guests before I do so?
Well, you can if you want.
Okay, I'm happy to. I just wanted to give you the opportunity first. So Erica, you've had a lot of experience working with various universities. I see University of Pittsburgh, I see Carnegie Mellon, I see Chatham. I'm wondering how you see the experience there transferring and the skills that you've learned and the just experiences you've had transferring over to kind of thinking more citywide and region-wide? And if you see there's overlap or opportunities for that experience to translate and transfer?
Yeah, definitely. I think our student population, so yes, I've been at Carnegie Mellon, Chatham, University of Pittsburgh. I did a very similar job at Carnegie Mellon that I do at Pitt. I think that there's a huge opportunity for us to get our students out of their bubble and out of their comfort zone. And part of that is introducing them to neighborhoods. It's getting them to be community-engaged, civically engaged, right? And part of that is going in and being able to work with community organizations. That is something that the Clean Pittsburgh Commission helps to facilitate. We work very closely with some of the neighborhood groups and the commission. Pennsylvania Resources Council, Alleghen Cleanways, when we do the citywide PMAD program, for example, right? We also do an MLK Day of Service. These are large-scale days of service that we do each semester, but that there's more that we do as a university. We focus a lot with Oakland Planning and Development Corporation on Oakland, Oakland cleanups, specialty cleanups. And so I think that we're already kind of doing the work at Pitt and being a part of that work. And this is just a way for us to kind of formalize that a little bit more.
And then just another thing, and a big piece of conversation with the Clean Pittsburgh Commission is funding. How to identify funding sources every year? Are there creative ways? The only source that currently exists is through fines and fees that are basically coming up to equal zero dollars every year allocated to the commission. So I'm not going to put you on the spot to say, what do you think about funding sources? But just so that you know, that's been an ongoing topic. I think there's a lot of support from council to be able to find creative ways to have sustaining funding sources throughout the years, every single year, but self-sustaining, I mean. But just to sort of put that bug in your ear now to be thinking about other creative ways to, outside of the capital budget each year.
Yeah, definitely. I think that additional funding would certainly help the commission to increase outreach efforts, increase what we have to be able to offer to the different community groups and to the community members for cleanups and educational purposes. And so I definitely, that's something we actually, we had a commission meeting last week. That was something we spent a good bit of time talking about.
And then Jenna, I don't really have any questions for you. One thing that I've been talking to a set of various members of the Equity Office, Office of Equity and various members in the past was, you know, you have EORC, which focuses on minority women-owned businesses. There's a category that's sort of outside of that around veteran-owned businesses to take veteran-owned businesses into consideration. Not at the same level, but sort of like extra points if you are a certified veteran owns business. What I'm really interested in pursuing and want to continue to work on with commission members is allowing LGBTQIA+ owned businesses to register with a national organization, which already exists, and to see if that can be another category. Again, maybe not the same, carrying the same weight as minority women-owned businesses, but if that exists and we see other cities have successfully done that, that could be another category to look at. So that's one particular interest that I've been sort of talking about for a year now and want to see if we can get off the ground.
I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Any other kind of thoughts or general ideas about, you know, your role in the commission?
Sure. You know, I think as an organization that we, you know, we've spent many years building trust and relationships throughout the region when it comes to construction or even professional services and companies. And thinking about how equity and equal opportunity do play a role in those efforts and how it can still be a difficult, a difficult aspect for many minority women-owned, even veteran-owned businesses to navigate where the opportunities are for them in the space and how we can help identify what those barriers are and play a role in removing them. You know, I think the Office of Equity is doing amazing work in how to pull some of those efforts into the commission to make it better known and, again, just remove barriers and really reach and attain the percentages and the actual access and opportunity that the commission has set out to do.
Yeah, exactly. And it's about removing barriers, I would agree with you. And it's also about thinking creatively about how to actually, from soup to nuts, you know, help provide the resources to grow the businesses so that they can be the size and caliber that could be then considered for a city bid. Because maybe there are minority women-owned businesses or entrepreneurs that just aren't of the size yet to be able to then bid on certain city projects or city-related projects. But if they had a little bit of a boost or a little bit of an opportunity to grow, then they could. And so providing the resources up and down the chain so that they then, it's not just taking the box, it's, you know, a holistic approach to these, to growing these businesses that are locally owned and operated. Yeah.
I agree.
Great. Well, that's, I'll get off my soapbox and turn it over to Councilwoman Harris if you have any questions.
Hi. Where is Pittsburgh 18?
Pittsburgh 18?
15218.
Oh, 208 is North Point Breeze.
Okay. And what area are you from?
I'm actually in Spurstock.
Oh, okay. You're Erica, right? You're Erica. Two Ericas at the same table.
Same spelling, too.
I was just wondering why you'd like to be on these commissions, if you could start?
Sure. Yeah, so to me, this is just a really exciting opportunity. We do so much work at Pitt with community members. So I'm in the Office of PittServes. That is the office at the university that's kind of charged with building those connections along with our Office of Community and Government Relations. I spend a lot of my time taking students out into communities to work with community members. We focus a lot on Oakland, right? Because we do a lot of sustainability work in Oakland. To be able to work with some of the other folks on the commission, so we already work with Pennsylvania Resources Council quite a bit. So that's really exciting to me to be able to expand that partnership. And then also, this opens up opportunities for our students to get into more neighborhoods, right? Talk to more people, learn more about the City of Pittsburgh. And hopefully, that convinces them that they want to stay here and they want to have a long-term investment in the city. And so to me, that's a really exciting opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, you know, through, throughout my entire career at GBA specifically, social equity and access and opportunity has been at the core of one of my values that has really driven a lot of my efforts and the programs or the projects that I work on. And over the last several years, we've grown stronger partnerships within the city on many different efforts that look at economic development, regional vitality, development in different ways, whether that is through the Office of Equity or ONE PGH or the Equity Indicators or thinking about how we're creating a place where people, all people can live and thrive. And, you know, it's one thing to talk about those ideals and values, but having implementation strategies in creating strong resources and foundations to actually realize those goals is, you know, more important than just talking about them. And I see the opportunity to serve on the commission as being, playing a role in that effort of really truly implementing, implementing the values and the goals of the Equal Opportunity Review Commission and helping to realize, you know, what has been set out to include more women, minorities, veterans in the process.
Okay. I have a question for you. It's sort of off of this part here, but they have been talking about changing the SATs where they would sort of go by the community, how much they make, you know, as a single-parent household or that. I'm just throwing it out. I asked you, what would you think about changing the SATs where they're looking at that? Because they're seeing more coming from households that have more money, two-parent households. And there is, I mean, it's out there. So I'm just wondering what you think.
Sure. I mean, to think about it, to think about that question, but on a...
And did you know about that?
I didn't know about that. But to think about it on a higher level, just across the board with many issues that we face as a society, that disregarding socioeconomic factors or family dynamics, where people live, all of those different aspects of our lives do contribute to our opportunity and access throughout our entire life. And so I can understand why there's an effort to move forward in that direction. Because I think any effort that disregards socioeconomic factors, you know, is not looking at the whole picture.
I was surprised to see that. And I can't remember where, but it was just recently that they are talking about the SATs. I guess I have another question. Well, let me give you another question. You've worked in a number of areas with Clean Pittsburgh and you also are looking at volunteers getting involved with communities. Probably for the last 12, 13 years. And I don't know if you'd ever worked with trees and vines and things like that. And I've been talking about the vines that when they cut in and make a highway, such as they did East Street Valley, you have all these vines that have crept up the hills, because Pittsburgh has a number of hills. And they're choking the trees out. And therefore, you have landslides. It's not just having the water there. But number one, it's not replacing the trees. Two, it doesn't look very good, especially in the wintertime, you know, with all these trees just dropping as they do. Sort of looks like garbage over a hill. And I was wondering, did you ever think about that being a part of Clean Cities to try to get groups together to work on something like that that is much needed? I walked out of the house this morning and there's two trees that are choking out, have been choking out. And one is now like this and the other one's sort of, you can see it's going to come down before fall. And it just concerns me because there's a landslide there. And the other areas that I've seen landslides, you see that the trees are either been down or, you know, they were there and you don't see any trees anymore because they cut them up and took them somewhere. Could that be any part of what you do in talking with the Clean Pittsburgh Commission?
Yeah, I think part of what Clean Pittsburgh does, so it's also about sort of restoration. So it's working with the community groups. And it's also working with the community organizations to have the expertise, right? Because you never want to go into a place and say, well, you know, I've got the expertise. I'm going to remove these trees and vines and all of these invasive plants. But maybe you don't have that expertise to do it, right? So I think it's really tapping into those community groups and working with residents and figuring out what you need to do. Part of that is beautification work, part of that is stabilization work. Part of that is making sure that the community members are involved and feeling like their community is, you know, aesthetically pleasing to others who are coming in, right? And also not encouraging other people who might see something like that and say, well, you know, nobody's taking care of this, so I'm going to throw litter out the window, right? Or something of that nature.
Or down over the hillside.
So that's all part of education. It's all part of the outreach component. It's all part of that sort of like being proactive and getting into the communities and talking to community members and working with them before situations like that, you know, deteriorate to the point where it's like, well, now what do we do? So I definitely think that all of that kind of is a part of the work of the commission. It's certainly part of the work that we try to do with our student volunteers when we go into communities. We never go uninvited into communities and we only go in if folks have, you know, a tangible project they really want us to help with and that they have the expertise in the community to lead our students to do it. Because, you know, we don't expect a bunch of 19-year-olds to know all of that right off the bat.
Well, I think it's socioeconomic or where there isn't as many homes in the area because of the landslides. And if you'd be gung-ho on that one, I'd be happy to give you my card. And I would love to get you involved with that. Because the community, I mean, they know they have landslides when they have them. We have people that are out of their homes, still out of their homes. And it is a problem in some parts of the city where there's hills. So I'll grab your card by the time we're done here. Okay, and Jenna, Pittsburgh Equity, I still don't see it in the city. I don't see it with women. I don't see it with minorities. Right now, my office is 100% minority. But I don't see it anywhere else. And it could be any type of equity for anyone. Now, do you look at that because I've talked to a number of people where I was told that some departments hand in, you know, what, male, female, different nationalities, whatever. But they're being told that they don't have to abide by this. And that's a concern to me. Because if you have some departments that have to comply, then I would think all departments should comply in one way or the other. So what do you think you could do about helping out with that situation?
Well, I think, you know, taking equity and opportunity seriously and also how the commission goes about holding people accountable so that it is the same process regardless of what department or authority that it's coming from. And, you know, putting it, putting these policies and the goals actually into practice and making sure that accountability is part of the process.
I mean, you hear it. Oh, you know, we're equal opportunity. But when you don't see it, to me, it's a problem. So I would hope that that would be one of your goals is to try to make sure that all departments are complying.
Definitely.
And not leaving anyone out there alone. How would I say that? I also want to thank you both for wanting to serve on these commissions. I also want to thank you both for wanting to serve on these commissions. You seem to me that you, you are very sincere about what you are about to do. And I guess this is reappointment? Why are you being a reappointment? Okay. Okay. I thought I read that somewhere. Okay. Well, thank you so much for wanting to serve and serving the city of Pittsburgh.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I want to echo that. I know, I'm, I'm sure that both of you have very full plates with your existing positions. And so your willingness to serve the public in this way is, is to be commended. So unless there are any other final comments that you'd like to offer, we can wrap this up.
Just want to say thank you to both of you. I look forward to serving and this is very exciting.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right. With no further business before the council, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Meeting of Wednesday, June 19th, 2019. We are now ready for public comment. Members of the public who want to address the council will be given three minutes. The green light means your time has begun, the yellow light means one minute summarized, red light means it's time to relinquish the podium. I would like to remind everyone the rules of council state that comment is limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before council. Profanity will not be permitted and order will be maintained at all times. First speaker, please.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marshall Cohen. I am a native of Pittsburgh, born and raised here. And last year, in my retirement, my wife and I moved back to Pittsburgh and we live in Shadyside. I'm here because I believe it is time for the city of Pittsburgh to have an annual festival of books. Pittsburgh has a very vibrant literary scene. It has authors, it has publishers, it has wonderful bookstores and organizations that support this. But Pittsburgh, as opposed to many cities across the country, does not bring all this together in an annual event. If you look across the country, you will see book festivals in small cities, big cities, boroughs of the city of New York, Gaithersburg, Maryland, even, and this surprised me, Las Vegas has a book festival. Who knew? So I think that the time has come for Pittsburgh to begin to support that. Book fairs are free, they are wonderful events for children, for families, they provide literary education information, they deal with all genres of writing, minorities, women, African-American, general history, it's whatever the community that is putting the fair on wants to do. I have started to work with the literary community around the city. I've been talking with publishers, with authors, with booksellers and reaching out and getting a support for the concept. And what I have said that I believe that we can put a critical mass together that can then create a steering committee to create the vision, either partner with or create a nonprofit organization and begin to look for the kind of support that, that I know would be out there for this. Pittsburgh has the resources, it has the foundations, it has the corporations, it has the libraries, it has the civic leadership. Now, I believe all of this is possible. I have two handouts, if I may, that I'd like to give you. It's a working slide deck about book festivals and what could happen here. And it's an article that was published just last Friday in a nationally respected magazine called Publishers Weekly, which is a bible for the publishing industry, and has an article in it on the bookselling resurgence of Pittsburgh. And it talks about the emerging bookstores. So what I would like to ask the council to do is to consider a resolution, memorial, whatever the appropriate vehicle is, to support the concept. The concept needs to get out into the community, people need to see that this is an idea that has a lot of broad-based support from which we can begin to work in making it happen. Yesterday, I had a cup of coffee with an executive from the University of Pittsburgh Publishing Press, very supportive. Everybody is supportive, a lot of people don't have the time to work on it, but we can make the time. I'm retired, I'm a book lover, I can help make the time and put this together. That's my pitch for you today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Give it to the clerk. Whatever you want to give, we give it to the clerk. Thank you very much.
You're really supposed to be sitting in here, Ms., you're supposed to be in here, council member. You're not supposed to leave like that. My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live in the Hill District. Now, he spoke and she left. Do you understand what I'm saying? When someone comes up here and speak, you're all supposed to pay attention. You're not supposed to get up and leave, you're not supposed, when someone come down and complain while someone's speaking, go and talk to them. I done told you it's that. But you, 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 you know, you don't have the adequate to actually be council members, to me, because you shouldn't know the rules and you shouldn't follow your laws. Now, first, the first thing I wanted to say is, she left, I was going to praise her because yesterday I was fussing at her because we didn't even know why she was gone. You never said she was on maternity leave, three months she comes back with a baby. I knew she was on maternity leave, but people were saying, see how you do. Now, she said this though, Ms. Brown, you are right, I am a public servant. See, all of you just talk about I'm an elected official. I like that part. She knows she's supposed to be a servant. That means serve. Okay. Number one, I'm looking, look, look Wednesday, this is the day. They had a 9:30 appointment. I have here, how can nine council members make it at 9:30 and yet you can't start the meeting till the day 10:25? Stood around laughing and stuff. You just don't realize that they talk about you on 90.5. That one time they talked about a meeting, two council members there, they know. Now, I want for Chris Moore and Sister Jita, they're talking about economic reparations. Remember, he's been talking about it. They're talking about it nationwide. So thank you, Chris Moore and Sister Jita, reparation for the slaves, for the work that we did in the United States that we built. We built the United States because you slave masters sat on your butts. You know, we had to even empty the babies at five o'clock in the morning, would have to get up and empty the stock buckets for you slave masters and your guests, and your guests. Five years old, they're emptying doo-doo from all the white people. Our children, and they have suffered, they're still suffering. Because every time I think about Bruce Kraus hollering at me in front of my grandchildren when he was rounding, I was supposed to have three minutes, he gave me a minute and 30 seconds and when I stood there and said, oh. Then you had your clerk say, Ms. Brown, you know all three, you all, and this was a lie. Ms. Harris took it, she, she said, anytime a child spoke, I've never seen anybody behind him get one minute and 30 seconds. E and Vic had a secret meeting, remember the six of them? Executive meeting on how to cut our time down. So Vic, I begged Vic, Vic, please meet with me. Years, quite a few years, but he can come at to Kraus's meeting, that executive meeting to try to stop us. Only three minutes and you cut me down to a minute and 30 seconds. Remember that, citizens, remember. That's how good used to be president, who I said should be president. Be careful for what you wish for.
Next speaker, please.
As I said yesterday, I'd come back to give you another update on what was happening. The meeting that I had yesterday before councils was with the president of the union for the Port Authority drivers. And the reason I went was the person who's in charge of the detours for the Port Authority has been handing out various excuses. And when you get rolling excuses, that's when it really begins to get to me. When I first called in April, he got back to me in early May, the conversation started off blaming the Water Authority and then ended up blaming the union contract as requiring that they play this game of requiring people to jump all over the place and run around, having to learn where the routes may be at that moment like rats in a maze. So what he told Brian O'Neill, again, started off with that. He also ended with saying, well, it was a union contract. So I went and talked to the union president and Steve Polonis and he said, nobody ever talked to us about this. He wants a waiver, which he said he had to have, he couldn't do anything unless, without that. He said, he wants a waiver, we're happy to give him a waiver. Says, you know, it suddenly makes sense. So now the reasoning has changed to, well, he has to do rolling stops because there's a hill up to Morningside, not a huge hill, but a rise up to Morningside and that is unfair to the riders if they put the route up there on a continuous basis to have them walk up there. So what he's doing is having this, instead of them walking up, he's requiring them to run up when they see that the bus hasn't come where they thought it was going to be. Now, this morning, and I finally this week, he actually posted some of the stops saying that here's where there's a problem, or, you know, you have to move. And the stop that said you had to go to the next stop going down the street, and I took pictures, is all blocked off. I also found out that the city does not have a liaison with the Port Authority, which is big of an important role that that takes in, in the transportation within the city. Yes, there are people who work with the Port Authority in the public works on various small projects, but there is no single liaison and that should maybe have to have legislation from this body requiring that an individual be appointed at the mayor's office as the liaison with the Port Authority so that when there are issues, it can happen. Yes, there is a liaison with the Port Authority, but not with the city. There's a number of other issues that have come up, the need for having an ombudsman that would track these things out and do what I'm doing because this is not right. There needs to be real structural changes.
Next speakers, please. Senior speakers, we'll go to the roll call.
Mr. Cockhill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mrs. Harris.
Here.
President Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavell.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Gail Smith.
Here.
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you very much. Before we go into the agenda, I am going to ask Councilwoman Harris if she would make a slight announcement.
Thank you. Yesterday, I introduced Yvonne, stand up, Yvonne, who is interning in my office. And today, and I told you all about him yesterday, today we have Brandon Taylor, who is also interning in my office. He is a graduate of P.A. Leader Charter School. And he is full, he's going to attend Har, Harm G. Andrews Culinary Arts. And he wants to be a chef at a major restaurant. So I'm hoping to go to that major restaurant and taste his cooking someday. Thank you, guys. And if you want to move up a little further so you could see, yesterday we were over there, if you want to stay over on that side. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome. It brings us to the Finance and Law Committee, which I am a chair. You can read the first two together, please.
Bill 1766, resolution authorizing the city ethics hearing board to enter into a professional services agreement with DeForest, Kosnik, Yokitis, and Barodinelli for professional legal services regarding ethics matters in an amount not to exceed $30,000. Bill 1767, resolution authorizing the city ethics hearing board to enter into a professional services agreement with Rothman Gordon for professional legal services regarding ethics matters in an amount not to exceed $15,000.
Where should hold an executive session?
Your second.
Second.
All those have favored since five hours, ain't I?
Aye.
Producers, name, next bill, please.
Bill 1768, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of innovation and performance on behalf of the city to extend the existing inter-local government corporation agreement between the city and the county of Allegheny for the enterprise resource planning by increasing the total amount by $630,000 for continuing support of the J.D. Edwards ERP system.
Read a motion.
Martian to approve with discussion.
Your second.
Second discussion.
Second. Ms. Harris.
I think that Councilwoman Kraus said first.
Yes. Who's here to speak on this, please? Morning.
So if you would please identify yourselves in your position for the city, for the public that is watching.
Good morning, Heidi Norman, acting director for Innovation and Performance.
Jeff Hovis, Business Relationship Manager, Innovation and Performance.
Jennifer Olzinger, acting director, Office of Management and Budget.
Great, thank you. Could you give us a brief synopsis as to why we're continuing with the J.D. Edwards system?
This, this continuation, the county services help us to operate and maintain and fix any of the services through J.D. Edwards, which is our ERP system, which brings in revenue and manages the finances of the city. This continuation will extend the contract from January of the current year, 2019, through June of 2020, to provide services for maintenance of, of the J.D. Edwards system.
So forgive my ignorance, I thought we were trying to wean ourselves away from the J.D. Edwards system.
So in this agreement, one of the aspects of it is they will, the county service center will begin to train folks in IMP on how they are providing those services so that we can begin to move away from the service center. So this is, this is simply a continuation so that we are put in a position where we're capable of doing that.
Continuation without any increase in cost, just this is based on what the existing cost would have been?
That's correct.
I have mixed feelings, I have to be very honest with you. So I'd like to listen to other members before I make a decision. Thank you.
Ms. Harris.
Thank you. I sort of had the same question. Now, what we found out when Act 47 fellows had told us that we had to go with J.D. Edwards, and it was like, the city has to do this, and I had to listen to them. And we found out later that this is, I don't know, you might have found out before, but council found out later that this program is a very old program. And we had put a lot of money into it. And I can play the tapes for you where they said that we'll be able to go all the way down to a pencil. How many pencils and the cost of pencils? Do you remember that?
I think that was before my time.
Before everyone's time? Oh, wow. Okay.
We are actually closer to getting down to that pencil level at this point with all of the changes my office has put into place. So we're much closer to getting to that pencil level.
Okay. The thing is, this is an awful old service. And what do we want? $630,000, is that per year?
18 months.
18 months. To the county.
Correct. This is a not to exceed amount, so we may not use all of that also.
What's the county do for us?
So right now, they are maintaining the day-to-day system, they are setting up users, making security changes, configuration changes. We are also in the middle of an upgrade to 9.2 from 9.0. We are very, very far behind. Council approved at the end of last year a $500,000 investment into new servers and the services that are going to be, need to be performed to do that upgrade, which they're in the middle of now. So this contract will continue, the service center maintaining our servers and everything through this upgrade period. And again, as Heidi mentioned, also now we have written in that we want our staff trained, we, we want to know what's going on, we want to be able to control our own destiny as far as J.D. Edwards goes, whether that's keeping J.D. Edwards or not keeping J.D. Edwards. And if we determine that J.D. Edwards is not the solution for the city, it's going to take us a good 18 months to even get a new solution in place. And it could be very costly. So we, we need to keep this up and running at least through next July, which will then also, this contract will then co-terminate with our J.D. Edwards licensing. And right now, those two contracts are six months apart. So that will have both contracts end at the same time, which is, is also in our best interest. So this is phase, phase one of- So this is phase, phase one of trying to get a better solution.
All of what you just said is what they told us when we had this, when it first came here. When a county came over, they sat at the table, and our people sat at the table, and we're going to, this is going to go right down to the pencil. Now, you're trying to have them train you for the same thing that they were supposed to do when we first received J.D. Edwards.
We actually want them to train us on the system, train our, rather than the county doing it for us. We feel like we could, even if we keep, have to keep J.D. Edwards another year or so until we figure out what it is that we're going to do, we would rather have our staff doing it and controlling it and not have to pay the county $400,000 a year to do it. So.
And...
But we don't, we can't break right now.
They were supposed to have the training done already.
There was never any training in the old agreement. This is new.
Okay. But they told council that there was training.
They may have.
And, you know, and we paid. And do you, do you know, at all the total amount of money that we have spent just on J.D. Edwards?
Over the years?
Yes.
Cumulatively, we would have to look into that, but we could get you the answer.
I would really like to know before I vote on this, because it really concerns me, especially in, I probably don't need to tell you, but, you know, we pay for security downstairs. Connie, don't pay anything. We pay for the elevators, and they have their elevators shut down. And I could go on and on with all the things that the city does. And then I could go on and on what the county does for everyone else in the county except for the city of Pittsburgh, which I think is totally unfair to the taxpayers of Pittsburgh because we, we are paying the same taxes as anyone else in the county, but yet they're getting all the services that we're not getting. And this here, I mean, they should just do it. They shouldn't charge us for it.
And this is our preparation in order to move away from that, so that we're no longer paying the county for these services.
Do you know if any other communities out in the county are using this service?
They are not.
Huh. Just happens to be Pittsburgh, so they could take money from us. Unbelievable. Okay, I would like to have that information before next Tuesday, because here's one more thing. I have done a right to know, asking, because we have taken a $200 million, well, I haven't voted for it. I only voted for 60 million. $200 million out. So I ask, please give me, by right to know, what these bonds have been spent on just for the first $100 million? And example, if they're talking city steps, okay, Public Works knows what city steps, and they know how much money they put there. So I was asking for the amount of what city steps, as an example, how much was spent and what was the remaining dollars? Do you know? They said, "Well, we have 30 days to do this." And they sent me back, and I don't even think, I know our guys have been working on it, our budget directors have been trying to figure out what they sent, but it was just a bunch of garbage. And I am going to appeal it if they cannot find it. But with this system, we should have been able to do that. And as old as it is, do you know how old it is by any chance? J.D. Edwards.
I believe we've had it close to 10 years.
10 years for us? For us? No, it's not 10 years. I don't think it's, do you think it's 10?
It's close to it.
Wow. Time goes fast. Okay. But we've been paying and paying, well, you'll, you'll give me that information. But I don't know. Maybe everyone else in the county is smarter than we are in Act 47, because, you know, they said we had to take this program. So I'm going to abstain today, and I'm going to look into what information you can provide for me. And I'm not complaining about any of you. I'm complaining about the system to get, when you ask for something, you can't get it. And when you do a right to know, you can't get it. So I would like that before I vote on this. Thank you so much.
Certainly understand your frustration, and that's why we're trying to get this training for us, so that we can see what we can and can't change, and to make even it better while we have it.
Well, I'll find the tapes if you want to see them. When, I mean, they were so in this program, and so was the Act 47 people. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Connor.
Oh, he's not, he stepped out.
He stepped out. He had asked. Anyone else? I'm sorry. No, that's fine. Anyone else? Ms. Gross?
Sorry, I was going to wait. So I think I just heard that we are not sure how much we've spent on J.D. Edwards to date, or did I miss the exact number?
We'd have to total that out.
Yeah, it's millions.
I would agree with that, yes.
And so I think the first contract started out at a million for maybe three years, something like that.
More than.
More than that. And at the time, we were on, I think, you know what I'm asking basically is for you to just paint a fuller picture. Instead of me trying to pull it up out of the back of my head, I'm sure you're more familiar. So why don't you start at the beginning? Briefly.
From, from where we came in, or from?
Well, when, I remember back, you know, when I got here, we were still talking about transitioning to paychecks or from paychecks.
I believe it was PeopleSoft.
It was PeopleSoft. I was thinking it was paychecks before it was PeopleSoft. PeopleSoft before it was paychecks, something like that. Does anybody else remember here? Do we have like an institutional memory gap?
Yeah. Yeah, we've all been here.
That makes software management difficult.
It does. It does, which is...
It does. I've done a little, and I, you know, I'm not completely, without some, you know, reference here. My sister did these kinds of systems, and she's retired, but for a lot of her life, she did integrated business management softwares with SAP, which is a big global company, and they transitioned oil refineries and things like that. So every, you know, not pencil, maybe pencils also, but nuts and bolts, no matter what size, throughout the whole thing. And so you're mapping it out on a software. How many did you just use today? How many do you need to buy out of the purchasing department? And so people do this stuff. And I think they do it in less time, with less transition costs, and without as many bumps. So can you speak to that a little bit?
I'll, I'll back up to at least what I know from, from my history, from top of the air. But as Councilwoman Harris said, back approximately 10 years ago, when Act 47 came in, PeopleSoft was end of life. The city had no money to buy a new system at that point in time. So our hand was forced into using what the county had.
And that was about when? Sorry?
2010.
Thank you.
So with that came the arrangement of the J.D. Edwards Service Center, because that staff already existed, maintaining, setting it up. And basically what occurred, what was supposed to occur was that the city would have a custom implementation. We would be able to design things. And it is my understanding that basically, because there was such a time crunch to get off of PeopleSoft, get onto J.D. Edwards, that they basically copied what the county had, shoved a square peg in a round hole, so to speak, with what the county was doing. And then, for whatever reason, whether it be lack of staff, whatever, during that period, nobody ever took the initiative on the city side to really go in and make J.D. Edwards our own. I'm not sure why that happened. That was before all of our times, a lot of your time. Through the past couple of years, I know I personally come to the table, and you guys have granted procurement money to go ahead and make some of those changes. We completely redid the item master. We do now have that detailed level. We're making, previously, everything would be entered at the last minute as an invoice, as a lump sum. We've moved to the practice of purchase order. Before you buy something in J.D. Edwards, holding them out, and we are making people break out that line item detail, so that we're seeing that there were this many hours of labor at this price, this many nuts and bolts at this price, right? So a Home Depot order that used to be one line item for $5,000 is now 30 line items with quantities and unit prices. So we are much, much further now. Do you like to get into that pencil level, which has really helped our team figure out what we're spending our money on, where we can save, and things like that? So, but unfortunately, at this point in time, we're still tied into this relationship, and this is really going to be our first step in getting our staff trained, which we should have done a long time ago. But Santi, Director Garsus is very supportive, and I, you know, have faith that the, the team in IMP can more than handle and get their knowledge around that, which what the service center does now from the county, and probably increase the quality, and really hopefully be able to customize the system better to the city's needs, at least for the time being, until we can really evaluate a new ERP system. As I said, if you're familiar with SAP, those things are very, very expensive, and there's a lot of upfront implementation costs. So we need to figure out what the best use of the city money is. And maybe for the next couple of years, it is keeping J.D. Edwards, but at least bringing it in-house and not paying the county $400,000 a year to do it for us.
So this is, you know, we have been talking about this for years now, it's, you know, every year that I've been here. But it's sounding now that when we look at really the whole storyline, it's really that the state overseers, Act 47 team, thought that this kind of out-of-the-box software would be better than our in-house employees at tracking things. Now that we have kind of 10 years' perspective on that, it certainly doesn't seem like it was a cost savings.
Right.
All right. So that's, I'm just going to say that again. Act 47 overseers, state-appointed, forced us to fire our employees.
Right.
I'm not, I don't want to state this wrong, so correct me at any point.
I know, let you.
Forced us to fire our in-house personnel, city employees, and forced us into technology that was supposed to substitute for those employees, do it better, do it smarter, do it faster, and do it cheaper. And it wasn't smarter, better, faster, or cheaper. It was dumber, slower, more expensive. And I'm not sure about the outcome. So, you know, I, I, again, I understand some technology and respect it, and really see there are upsides. But I think it's our job to stop and assess. And the other thing that I think all of us can understand, as we've become our own administrative staff, because we have to do our own, you know, work on our own computers, because there is no administrative staff in the world now. We each are expected to be able to use our own computer. I know Councilwoman Cockhill can probably speak to this, because he kind of, you know, as a Luddite, refuses to use his computer. And I, I think there's really a discussion that we should be having. I'm not going to have it anymore, longer in this meeting, Councilman, but that we assess the benefits, the pros and cons, honestly, right? So that we're asking our programmatic employees to also kind of be their own bookkeepers, to enter in the information. I mean, how much information is valuable and how much information is really just clutter, is, I think, just an open-ended question that you don't have to answer, and we're not going to get the answer to today, but I think it's an important question to raise. So, thank you.
That's what we want to find out.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Connor, you're back.
Yeah, sorry. Just real quick. So when this is up in 18 months, are we going to go out for a proposal? And when is that going to be written?
I think that's yet to be determined.
Okay.
We need to, IMP really needs to get in there, evaluate the architecture, about, you know, evaluate is where the problem is. Is it the software? Is it the service? Is it a combination? We're not sure.
Okay.
So we really need, through the end of this year, the plan is to kind of evaluate that and see where we are. We are doing an upgrade with getting some of our own staff in there. We may be surprised. We might be able to break away sooner, or it may be just as complicated as they've been telling us that it is to break away, and it might take a longer plan. So I think by the end of this year, we'll have a lot better idea after getting our own staff in there.
Okay, yeah, I just don't want this to...
And really come back to, but our plan is to break away, wean ourselves off. Even if we keep J.D. Edwards, we really want to eventually figure out how to bring it in-house and then figure out what is the best solution.
The number will go down, is what you're telling us. Okay. But the RFP, you guys haven't thought of that till you get to January, because then we have till, not good, till next fall, I guess, to get rid of this? Okay. Or to keep it, whatever.
Well, right till next June.
So there are two, let me, let me say, there are two pieces, right, to J.D. Edwards. So just to be clear, this is only one of two pieces. So one piece is actually purchasing access to the licenses, to access to the software itself. That is completely separate. What we're talking about here is the service center, which is the maintenance and upgrade of the system.
Right.
Okay. So over the 18 months, what we hope to do is two things. One is work with the service center to update from the 9.0 to 9.2, which they tell us is going to be a huge leap forward in terms of the capability of the system. The second piece is, is to allow the staff from IMP to get in there and to do an assessment, so that we can make a plan to help the city move away from the service center, right? And whether that's to IMP, or if we decide that it would be better to be outsourced to a different organization, that is something that we have yet to determine, because we haven't been in there yet. And then, we also have to ultimately determine, make an assessment, and determine what makes sense in terms of what our ERP system is for finance and revenue.
Okay. So basically, January, we'll figure that out.
Yes. We should have an assessment by then, and hopefully be able to bring a plan forward.
Cock...
I'm good. I'm good. Thank you.
I'll tell you, I'm always amazed. One thing that's, you know, caught my eye since I've been here is the amount of money we spend in technology, whether it be for this software. I don't even know, is that right?
It's unbelievable.
Yeah. So to me, it's like, as a, just somebody analyzing from the outside, it's, I'm shocked at the money we spend. Not only your department, every department. It's just amazing to me. So this sounds like a bad marriage that we need to get out of with the county here, and I'm glad you're, you're working, you know, in that direction, because, you know, it's not good for anybody. I just, my, my only question was, how much do we pay J.D. Edwards for the actual services versus their consulting or the team they give us? What percentage-wise is it? 40, 60, or roughly, you know?
You mean between, between the licenses versus the servicing?
So we pay for a team, kind of like to, you know, guide us through the whole thing that we used to do on our own. What's that amount to versus the actual software?
The contract with the service center for the maintenance and all of that is approximately $400,000 per year.
So 40%?
The licensing is, don't quote me on this, I'd have to look, but I think it's around 7750. We just got the invoice. I'd have, I would have to look, but it's...
So they're not that far off, really. I mean, if we could do the actual, whatever it takes to make it all function right, we're, you know...
We could at least probably save $300,000 a year by bringing it.
Now, we'll have to pay our own employees, obviously, to do whatever it might take, but...
I support that.
Obviously, what's that?
I support that.
So that's $100,000, something like that, you know, even if we need, so.
Okay, that's it. I just can't even keep track of the spending for IT anymore. I was like, wow. Okay.
The other conversation, first round, if not second round, starting with Mrs. Harris.
What did you say the price of the license is? Is that just our price?
That's, yeah, that's our, that's just what the city pays to just be, we pay Oracle, the manufacturer of J.D. Edwards, to be able to use the software. That's our user licenses.
And you said 7750?
I think it's 750, roughly.
Oh, 750.
Yes. And by, and then, I think I mentioned this before, but this contract being 18 months, normally then one year, it will end next June, and then it will co terminate with our licenses. So whatever change we want to make, those contracts will end at the same time.
And I just wanted to make sure you understand what I'd like to have. Number one, how old the program is? Not just how long have we been using it, but how long has the county used it even before we got it? So how old is it? used it even before we got it? So, how old is it? And the dollar, dollars broken down of money that the city has spent on J.D. Edwards since we've gotten it? Okay, and I think other members would like to see that, too. Thank you.
Second round, Mr. Cross.
So, thank you very much. So, I'm glad I took the time to hear other members' concerns and comments, and because you're hearing a unified front on the council, that we, we have our concerns and our reservations. I met with Bill just to make certain that this was a budgeted item, and it is a budgeted item that came through capital or operating, operating. And so, I'm gonna support this, but I'm gonna support this with one caveat, and I need, I need an end date. I need to know that this is not an ongoing continuation. And I just, I need an end date. So, like Councilman O'Connor brought up, January, sounds like a good time for us to revisit this and make certain that before we go into our next budget season, that we actually have an, an end date and a game plan for how we move away from J.D. Edwards. Thank you.
Anyone else second round? I will say just one thing, I think. So, first of all, thank you for your talents, gifts, and dedication to our city. What would happen if tomorrow, tomorrow, we decided that we wanted to leave J.D. Edwards? Tomorrow, what would happen? What would we do?
We would no longer have any control or ability to take in revenue or manage our finances.
Or pay anyone.
Or pay anyone.
Right. And then, what would we do after that?
We would have to procure a new system, integrate all of the old data, would have a hefty price tag, and it would take probably a year to, to, to make a change from one system to another.
Just to be clear, they still have the ability, it just would have to be done manually? Just, go ahead.
We would have to write paper checks. We wouldn't have a finance system.
But they don't have the employees. They don't have the manpower to do it manually.
They can outsource, it's like they do everything else, not at this time.
Couldn't do it manually. They don't have the power. They actually couldn't do it manually. They don't have the staff to do it manually. I don't think. I don't think. No, we don't have the staff to do it manually.
We should really look into that.
My point is, I, I'm really trying, okay, and then the last thing, and then I'll make my point. If we go and procure a new system, ballpark, and I'm not asking for real numbers, what, how much is it gonna cost us?
Two to three million dollars.
Annually?
That's just implementation. And then annually, $100,000 maybe or so in licensing. I, we, I don't know.
Yes.
But, after that, after initial investment, I think that the recurring licensing fees would be much less than we're paying Oracle now.
What I'm suggesting is, I think this is a very healthy conversation about what is our best choices. But I think we need to be realistic in that we're going to have software. It's not, we're, so we're not, we're not talking about software versus no software. We're talking about which is the best software, what is the best value, which most effective, what's the best bang for our dollar. And so, I just wanna make that part clear, because I think certainly sometimes, for, for, for some of us, and I, I struggle with technology myself, right? I like to have all the toys. But I, I bought a new TV on, bought myself a new TV for Father's Day, and, and, and you had, I had to use my phone, I had to use my phone to set it up. I'm like, what's this? You know, you can't just take it out of the box and turn it on. No, it, it starts talking to my phone, and it's telling me things that I don't even know, you know, it's, and so, brave new world is here. And so, I am, I, I just wanna make it very clear that, that, that this is, we are in this world. We're going to have to figure out what is the best product that we can use and get the, but I think that's what council's desire is. How do we get the best product at the lowest cost? And, and many of us are suspicious that the J.D. Edwards system, primarily because it wasn't designed for us, right? That's really the problem. The J.D. system, we took it, we, we bought, we got it, my understanding, because the county is a piggyback, but it was really not a system that was designed for us. I think, I know that's not how it happened, Ms. Harris. It was-
Act 47 forced us into-
Yeah, but I mean, the reason, but we, we got, the reason they forced us was because the county had it, we could get it faster, easier, they thought lower, versus a system that was specifically designed for city functions, city activity. So, I'm-
Reverend, I just wanted to add one thing, if I could. For all the reasons that Reverend Burgess just stated to me, and I, I compare, and it's probably not the best comparison, but I compare IT and what we spend on it per year as a drug almost, meaning, we should never be in a position, again, this is not pointing this at you all, but we should never be in a position where we can't get out of something, you know, and we're stuck in paying for whatever we're paying for. So, for all those reasons that we, I'll, I'll vote for it today, because, you know, it's, I feel like we need it, but I hate being dependent on these things, you know, I just, I guess, I wish there was an easier way.
We feel the same way.
We are, we are, we are in second round. Anyone else second round, before I go to third round with Ms. Harris. All right? We are out of second round now. Third round, starting with Ms. Harris.
You have till June, then, 2/20, right? Okay. You, I mean, Act 47 should have looked at the school district, because the school district is so far ahead of the county and the city. At least they were when I was there. And I think that would be a good thing, is to see where they are, because computers are out four years, five years, they're gone. And-
They refurbish them and put them back in.
Act 47 did not even look at where the school district was with any of this. So, I just wanted to add that, you know, to maybe help out. That would be, I think, one of the large providers of technology. Thanks.
Any other conversation? Seeing Ms. Kell Smith.
I just wanna say, I, I agree with Councilwoman Harris about the school district, but that was over 10, 12 years ago when I was there, and they were far advanced, more than the city and county. But I actually think they, we've caught up a little bit. But I think the director would like to meet with the folks at the school district that I've talked to, and, and see what, what they're doing, that we could do differently here, that maybe would help. So, we'll see. But I feel the same way as everyone else. I, I mean, I don't even wanna vote for it, because I think we've had time to get out of it. So, I'm gonna abstain today, but I'd like to, like to watch the meeting a little bit more and hear the conversation a little more, before I make a final vote next week, because I missed the beginning part of the conversation.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve on the table. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Thank you very much.
Abstention.
Two abstentions. Next bill, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day.
Bill 1769, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from Pirate's Charities of $11,000 to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund.
Motion to approve.
You have a second.
Second.
Any conversation? Ms. Harris.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Public safety. Keeping everyone on their toes, making sure they're all here today. Now, I don't think it's, oh, God, I think I have a question. What was, what's the money going to?
It's being deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. That was the trust fund established and approved by city council following the Tree of Life tragedy to accept donations from the public. It, it hasn't been spent yet. We have a balance of roughly $210,000 right now. It's, the fund is, allows us to spend it on supplies, equipment, and training for public safety.
Okay. So, we wouldn't train them for issues like we just had?
It's at the Public Safety Director's discretion to spend that money. I'm not sure what his plans are for that right now, but that, that the intention-
Could you please sign that and send me an email?
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other conversation? See no conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 1770, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections Alternative Fuel Incentive Grant Program to add eight dual-host electric vehicles charging stations to the Second Avenue fleet lot, not to exceed $135,160 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve.
You have a second. Any conversation? Ms. Harris.
Yeah, I heard, yeah. And you thought you were gonna get off VC today.
Could you say your names?
Peter McDevitt, Senior Asset Management Analyst with the Office of Management and Budget.
Rebecca Kirinam, Principal Resilience Planner, Department of City Planning.
Okay, we're, we're going to add the vehicles. Are we going to add the stations to put electricity into them?
Yeah, so, the, the first bill on this list is to put in charging stations. So, at this point, we have 18 charging stations? 19 charging stations and 19 electric vehicles. So, we have one plug for every vehicle to, to power those. So, before we start purchasing new vehicles, we wanna make sure we have somewhere to plug them into and charge them, so we can actually use them. So, that's, that's what the first bill is on the table for.
Okay, so, you said 19. So, where will they be located? Are they in different areas of the city, or are they just in one lot for the cars?
The charging stations will be located at the Second Avenue parking lot, where we host our permits, licensing, and inspections fleet. The nine vehicles will also be located there. We currently have four vehicles that are located at Motor Pool Lot that charge there as well.
Um, where'd you say, you said first, where they're gonna be?
Second Avenue parking lot.
Okay, okay. Thank you. You think, you're not gonna have any problems with them dying and having to be towed?
No, no, we've, they've been working very well. There's, there's less operational issues with them than regular motor cars, and they've, I've heard nothing but good reviews.
Yeah. They also have a station over Local 5 that you can plug into, too.
Thank you both for your voices.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Erica.
Thank you. So, I'm really supportive. I wanna continue to help grow our non-fossil fuel use of vehicles in the city and charging stations as much as possible. However, I did understand that the charging stations that we had in the lot maybe weren't as, we weren't, weren't what we expected. They weren't charging as quickly as we thought, and so then, the vehicles weren't able to charge up appropriately. Is that, am I understanding that correctly, or?
Yep.
Can you discuss how this will be different from the last ones?
Um, I think you might be referring to the solar arcs that we-
Okay.
-procured, when we also had a grant for that. And turns out, Pittsburgh does not get as much sun as San Diego. So, during the wintertime is whenever we had most of the issues with those, just because even during those months, we get even less. So, we have started work to make sure that this coming winter, we don't have those issues again. We've been working with the Parking Authority, and we've actually physically moved those solar charging stations. But these, these stations that are in question on this bill will be tied to the grid, so they won't have those kind of, they won't be dependent on sun. They'll be reliable.
If I can add to that. What this, what this project will do is bring the electric that we need to the Second Avenue parking lot, which currently doesn't have electrics, except for the light poles. So, this will be the failsafe for that, so that, then we can, you know, plug anything into the electric.
Okay, so, the solar charging stations will still be in existence, but this will be the failsafe for that.
That's right.
So, as much as possible renewable energy powering, then, you know, cleaner cars, but needing, if we need to plug into the grid, we will.
Yes.
That's right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cross.
Thank you. Timely conversation, a little off-topic, but I'd like to ask this. I got an email from constituent last night, I'm trying to pull this up on my phone, forgive me, that said, that'd like to purchase an electric car, and they'd like to know if we have any policies or procedures around how one would charge their electric car. Here's an example. 95% of people that live in Southside Flats have the option of on-street parking. So, are people gonna run extension cords across sidewalks to charge electric cars, right? So, I, I'm just curious, maybe Peter, offline, you and I, or however that would be, set up an appointment, so that I have a better understanding of how I can go to constituents, encourage them to purchase electric cars. But what are the policies and procedures around how people are gonna charge their electric cars if they only have on-street parking?
Our division has been, are convening an electric vehicle task force. So, we just had our final meeting of that task force, and we are developing a recommendation policy booklet that should be out shortly.
It's still, if we could just take it offline, set something up out of the office, and I'd like to be able to get back to the constituent and let him know. Thanks, appreciate it.
A motion to approve on the table. Ms. Cross.
Thank you. Councilman Cross, if you wouldn't mind, including me as well, I've got constituents also inquiring about whether they could set up their own charging station, and, and those kinds of things, and safety issues, and just all, all around. So, it's very interesting. But since we have resilience at the table, just a brief question, and you don't have to answer it here, but I just also wanna say for the record that we really talked about total vehicle miles traveled citywide. So, while it's, I think, setting a good example that we're talking about our own fleet, I, I look out at the city, and I, you know, experience the streets, and it seems like there are more cars than ever. And so, this is a matter of concern to me, and I don't feel like that we are prioritizing it in the policy setting that we're doing here at this table or at the budget. So, I'd be happy to talk more about that another time as well. Thank you.
Motion to approve on the table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 1771, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Office of Management and Budget to execute relevant agreements to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protections Alternative Fuel Incentive Grant Program to purchase nine electric vehicles to be added to the city's fleet and not to exceed $67,500.
Is your motion?
Motion to approve.
You have a second. Any no conversation? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. All right, that exhausts the-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, guys.
The Law Committee that takes us to the invoice, need a motion for the invoices.
I should approve.
You have a second.
Second.
Conversation about the invoices. No conversation about the invoices. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay.
No.
One no, one no for the invoices.
Thank you.
All right, takes us, there are, there are no intergovernmental transfers, there are P cards, P cards on the table. All in favor signify, need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any conversation about the P cards? No conversation about P cards. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Takes us to Polling Force Committee. Ms. Kell Smith is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 1778, resolution granting unto saddle properties. Their successors unassigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain, and use at their own cost and expense a handicap ramp with handrail at 1016 Fifth Avenue, First Ward, Sixth Council District.
Need a motion, Ms.?
Motion to approve.
You have a second. Any conversation? No conversation. Ms. Harris.
Where, where is that?
Sixth Council District.
610 Fifth Avenue.
Oh, okay.
Any conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Land, that takes us to Land Use and Economic Development Committee. Ms. Gross is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill 1772, resolution, amending resolution number 98 of the Residential Parking Permit Program, Area KK in the Southside Flats, Community Council District 3.
Need a motion, Ms. Gross.
You could read it with the next one as well.
Read the next one, too.
Bill 1773, resolution, amending resolution number 363 of 2018, for the Residential Parking Permit Program, Area X in the Shady Side, Community Council District 8.
Need a motion, Ms. Gross.
Motion to approve.
You have a second.
Second.
Any conversation? Ms. Harris.
Yes. I just wanna know who's in charge of this. Okay, I don't need you, because I'll call you on another issue. Thank you.
Any other conversation? See no conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Next bill, please.
Bill 1774, resolution, amending resolution number 13, providing for an agreement, contracts, consultant, and vendors to assist the city in developing plans and studies to support the development of an Oakland neighborhood plan, and provide for the payment of the cost not to exceed $250,000.
Motion to approve.
You have a second.
Second.
Conversation. Ms. Smith.
I just wanted to just say that, you know, my family's from Oakland. My mother and sister still live there, but I see so much money going into this area, into other areas, and I'd like to see some of this funding also go into the southwest of the river. That's all I'm saying. And the north side.
Any other conversation? No conversation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? Takes us to Intergovernmental Affairs Committee, last, next to last committee. Um, Mr. Carter's the chair.
Bill seventeen seventy-five, resolution authorizing a corporation agreement between the city and the PWSA to provide for the rights and obligation of each party with respect to each other and for payments and capital corporation between the parties.
Mr. Carter.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion.
Second.
Second. So I'm going to make a motion to hold this bill, uh, for a public hearing, but I do want to just let everybody know, I got an email, I spoke to Councilwoman Gross, who represents us on the PWSA board, got an email from Paul Egger. If you look at the agreement that was sent over, it terminates July fifth. Um, their board is meeting on the twenty-eighth, and they're going to have a resolution that's going to extend the agreement to September, if council doesn't pass something in the meantime. So I have that email, I'll send it to, uh, council members, uh, this afternoon, and now I'd like to make a motion to hold for public hea... Oh, sorry, I don't know if anybody's...
I just want to know, can we also have a post-agenda, so the public knows what's in the agreement?
Right.
Yeah, do, do you want to...
Motion for post-agenda, uh, cable cast post-agenda on the club agreement.
For second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? Takes us back to the original bill, Mr. Carter.
Okay, motion to hold for, uh, cable cast public hearing.
Second. And post-agenda. Oh, we already...
I already...
Oh, no, no, okay.
Probably move to hold for a cable cast public hearing, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? The bill is held. Next bill, please.
Bill seventeen seventy-six, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for Forty-third Street townhouses at sev... one seventy-two Forty-third Street.
Uh, you could read the next together if you...
Bill seventeen seventy-seven, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for the Elmhurst Group, one Bigelow Square, Suite six-thirty.
Motion to approve.
You're second.
Second.
Any conversation? No conversa...
No, I just want to, phew, that's all. Maybe I'll quit hearing that when I ask the question. I mean, this is time, two days a week, that we sit here, and this is our time to let the public know what's going on in the city. And I'm tired of the, ah, every time I asked a question, and it's not from you. Thank you. Nor the two people sitting beside me. Thank you.
Any other conversation that the council has? If not, that takes us to the hearings committee, where President Cross is the chair.
We didn't say aye.
We didn't approve, yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, we didn't feel, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Thank you very much for the correction. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay?
Thank you.
All right, those two bills are passed. That now takes us to the hearing committee. Ms. Cross is the chair. We have a new paper.
Bill seventeen seventy-nine, petition from the residents of the city requesting a public hearing before council relative to random and excessive bus route and stop changes by the Port Authority of Allegheny County without notice to residents in the Morningside neighborhood.
Need a motion.
Motion to hold and schedule for public hearing.
You're second.
Second.
Any conversation? Ms. Harris.
Yes, I would like it to be for more than Morningside, because, uh, there, there have also moved bus stops, uh, in my area.
So you would have, you can do that. Um, this petition had, cannot be altered, because it came to us from the public, so we have to pass this bill, this hearing. Which you could do, though, as council, you could, um, make a motion for a similar, um, a similar motion to have a public hearing, and then work with the president's office, that you actually could do them back-to-back, so it becomes kind of one big thing. I think that's what you would want to do, but first of all, let's do the hearing as required, uh, by our, our, our law. So there is, um, a motion to hold for a public hearing, um, I, it was probably moved in second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? Now, Ms. Harris, for a new motion, you want to?
Yes, I would like to motion, um, for back-to-back, uh, public hearing, and, uh, it'd be, I don't know if there are any other problems in any other districts, but you can, you can add to my, if you want to, but I need it for the north, and I'd like to have questions answered by both Domi and Port Authority.
Okay, wait one, these are two different things. The public hearing would not be a question-and-answer period, it would be time for the public to chat.
Post-agenda.
Okay, so which do you want? Do you want a post-agenda, or do you want a public hearing? Which one do you want?
Uh, give me a post-agenda, and that way, if anybody from Morningside, or, you know...
Right. So before I entertain them, if you wait for a moment, so we, because we're doing this as a, as a group, Ms. Gross may have something to add to this conversation.
It wasn't seconded yet, but there was a motion, but not a second.
With the motion, she withdrew the motion for public hearing, because she now wants a post-agenda in its place.
Did you make the motion for the post-agenda? I didn't hear...
She didn't make either one, I thought.
Okay, but yeah, I would like to comment if you, if you allow...
Before, before, the reasoning is, I thought you may want to tweak, help her tweak her post-agenda. If not, I'll take the post-agenda and then come to you. Which one do you want?
I'll discuss on the post-agenda, I just want to make a...
All right, so we need a motion, um, I need a motion, Ms. Harris, to, um, have a cable cast post-agenda, um, on the res... on the random and excessive bus route and stop changes by the Port Authority of Allegheny County in the city of Pittsburgh.
Okay.
So moves, I need a second.
I'll second that.
All right, now conversation, Ms. Gross.
Yeah, so I just wanted to reiterate what the chair just mentioned, which is that this is a petition from the people of Morningside for a public hearing about the route changes in Morningside. And I just want to make sure that we are having, to be clear, it, to the public, that we are having that hearing scheduled at the convenience for the people in Morningside, and it will not be affected by anyone else's discussion anywhere else, but I'm happy to also support further discussion on the topic in, in other formats. Thank you.
All right, so we have a, a motion to host or have a public, um, a cable, a cable cast post-agenda, which Ms. Harris will chair. Um, any other conversation about that? Ms. Harris.
Yes, I'd, I'd like, uh, the Port Authority notified, and also, um, who takes care of this, Domi.
But you work with clerk to have your invited guests, and I'm sure they will work with you to have...
Those are the two areas.
And, and other people that you may want to, 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 to testify.
And if they're...
Anybody, anything else about this particular motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay? All right, so is ordered. Now we are moving toward the end of our agenda, we have...
Point, point of order.
Point of order.
Yes, back-to-back, these will be back-to-back, the hearing...
That's something you have to discuss with the president and the clerk.
Well, no, I mean, it's all going to be on the same thing.
That's something you have to discuss with the clerk and the president.
I'll, I'll discuss it with the clerk. I have not talked to Bruce Kraus in probably the last eight years, and I can go on of him going in my office when I'm not there, uh, and a million other things. I do not talk to Mr. Kraus, I talk to every other member.
So, in order to have what you want, you will have to talk to some combination of the clerk and the president, and they will do the scheduling.
I will talk to the clerk, and she could talk to the president.
I'm sure you're effective, you're a very effective a councilperson, and so you will do it in the way that is most comfortable for you. Any other conversation? Uh, before I, before I read the announcements, Mr. Lavelle.
Yes, Ms. Brown asked that I announce that the Hilldisher Consensus Group is hosting a meeting this evening at the Grayson Center in collaboration with the Housing Opportunity Fund to assist those struggling with home repairs or assistance paying rent.
Thank you very much, I'm sure she's home watching. Any other conversation? Any other conversation? Let me read these, uh, meeting announcements, an executive session is scheduled this afternoon for members relative to city legal matters. Next Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, at one-thirty, council will hold a cable cast public hearing on Bill seventeen thirty-five, as it relates to a liquor transfer, liquor license transfer application for Woods House LLC. Um, I think this is our first standing committee meeting, where we're all here. It's good to have Erica Strasberger back with us, we are nine now, strong again, and, um...
And the baby gets to vote, don't you?
The baby, yeah, we missed him today, um, but it was good to have him in our presence yesterday.